Hello and welcome to this extension of the forum to look at one of the case studies that we're presenting in relation to the economics of mutuality and it's a fascinating case study of a British water company, Welsh Water, which has had a very interesting history associated with it and in the process has established a very informative way of trying to progress the implementation of purpose in its business. We are very fortunate to be joined by Chris Jones, the former CEO of Welsh Water, who's been working with us on a case study of the company. And we're delighted to hear from him about the experience of the company, the lessons to be learnt and how it informs us about ways in which companies can really embed purpose at the heart of their activities. So Chris, welcome. Thank you very much indeed for being with us and we look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Well, Colin, thank you. Thank you very much for the invitation. Delighted to be joining you today. It was excellent event. And very happy to share a little bit of the history of Welsh Water for 20, 25 minutes, something like that. And then very happy to discuss further. Perhaps just to sort of set a little bit of context, because obviously very diverse audience. I've got a short presentation which Gary, I think, is going to load up for us now. And use that to to set a little bit of context about Welsh Water and our history and how we end up being such a different company. So if Gary, if we go on to the next slide, page two. Yeah, a couple of things to say firstly about Welsh Water by way of context. I mean, firstly, for some of you, you may need to know that Wales is that sort of bit over on the left hand side of Great Britain, on the western seaboard there. We serve most of Wales, some adjoining parts of England. I think really two things to stress about the company. First is that we really are the quintessential essential public service. Because what we do is we provide clean water sanitation services to population of about three and a half million. We clean up wastewater from from homes, businesses and so on, and return that safely to the environment. So what we do is essential for public health. It's essential for the environmental quality of the area we live in. So that's absolutely crucial to the to the company. And I guess the second thing I would stress is just how asset intensive a business it is. There's a couple of stats on the page there. You can see we have 57,000 kilometres of pipes in Welsh Water. Put that in context, the equator, I looked it up, it's about 40,000 kilometres. So our pipe network would go right round the equator, one and a half times in providing that service. So massive asset value replacement cost of assets, about 30 billion pounds to provide that service to a population of about 3 million. So those are a couple of the essential features of the business. What we do is really critical and and very asset intensive. So if we flip onto the next slide, Gary. The UK water industry, I mean, it's it really is fascinating. It's like a sandpit for economists really, because you've got a bit of everything in there. You have in Scotland and Northern Ireland, there are public sector suppliers of water and wastewater services. But in in England and Wales, the industry was privatised in 1989 by the Thatcher government. Probably its most controversial privatisation. And so at that point, there were 10 big listed water utility companies. Now, since then, there are still three companies in England that are listed on the the UK stock exchange. The other six have become privately owned, mixture of owners, potentially sovereign wealth funds or overseas pension funds or infrastructure funds and so on, offering acting as a consortium owning those businesses. So you've got a bit of public, you've got various different models of private. But you've also got Welsh Water, which is a private company, but no shareholders. So very different to the other private companies there. So you know, a bit of all varieties of of ownership models. So the question obviously is, well, how did Welsh Water become to be so different to all the other private companies? And if we flip onto the next page, Gary, a little bit of history, basically Welsh Water became, well, it's not language we would have used at the time, but I think in a way it kind of lost its purpose. So rather than being a privatised water company, it was sort of persuaded that that was fairly dull and boring and they needed to diversify into new growth markets, expand the business, diversify into a much wider range of activities. So they ended up buying things like an international engineering consultancy. They ended up owning toll roads in Australia. And then crucially, ended up buying the local electricity company in Wales as well. And nothing particularly wrong with that. The trouble was though, that by the time they they bought into the electricity market, it really was at the the peak, prices had been a bit up and up. So they paid top dollar for the electricity company and took on a lot of leverage to do so, a lot of debt to do so. So the problem really was that then when the regulatory systems tightened, which they were inevitably going to do, 1999, in particular, very much tougher price reviews, big price cuts, both water companies and electricity companies in England and Wales, that left the the group, it was called the HIDA group by this stage, over leveraged and financially very exposed. So its share price fell from about 10 pounds 50p a share to about 1 pound 80p a share. Which if you consider that this is still basically monopoly essential service businesses, that's a pretty dramatic fall in share price and left the the business basically with a very low credit rating and in a, you know, in a serious state. So the company, HIDA, was sort of put up for sale effectively. But still very valuable businesses within the group. So not surprisingly, people like Nomura and Japanese Investment Bank, their UK arm, who were really, I mean, they were, they were the best in this field. They they saw a great opportunity to buy a business, strip out very valuable companies and recapitalise it and make a lot of money in the process. So Nomura were very interested, put in a bid to buy HIDA. And then WPD, an American power company interested in those electricity assets, they also came in and bid and there was a kind of bidding war going on for HIDA during 2000. But whilst all this was going on, a couple of us who were within Welsh Water, myself and a colleague called Nigel Annett, we'd kind of seen this coming. We'd foreseen that once the price review kicked in, that that the company would be in financial trouble and therefore been thinking about, well, what did we think was the right answer for for Welsh Water? Because it didn't seem right to us that it was kind of being kicked around in the international capital markets. And it also didn't seem a very efficient way of of financing this very asset intensive business. So again, if we flip over, Gary, what we what we came up with was this, at the time, new idea, we called it Glasscomrie, a new business that would be a private company, but wouldn't have shareholders. It would be financed through the the bond markets, raise its own capital that way, and it would kind of play to the strengths of the business. So by not having shareholders, we would be able to say to pension funds, investment companies and so on, you can buy our bonds, you can buy 50 year bonds from Glasscomrie and you know, it won't be taken over, it it won't diversify into different business models. It will stay true to a single purpose and that purpose is to provide the best possible value we can to Welsh Water's customers. So we called it a single purpose business. And then that we thought would be more efficient financially than the shareholder owned companies that would deliver financial surpluses and would be able to use those, return those to to the customers used for their for their benefit. So if in a way, we thought that was not only the right thing to do, we also thought that was a very efficient business and financial model as well. So that was the idea, as I say, very new at its time, hadn't been done before. So with a slight sense of trepidation, Nigel and I launched the idea in the summer of 2000. And if we flip over to the next, the next page, Gary. I guess you'd call this a slightly mixed reaction when when we first put this out into the public domain. Perhaps not surprisingly, The Guardian thought this was great democratic ownership. They loved the idea. Financial Times, very, very measured. Sunday Telegraph were convinced that Nomura, big Japanese investment bank, they say the best in the business, that they would, they would win out in the in the bidding race. But the one that sticks in my mind is the headline from The Independent, who referred to Glasscomrie as being the pantomime horse. And yeah, it was, it was, it was a nice quote. It said, yes, coming on at the end of the HIDA sort of farce comes the pantomime horse. Because whilst it's quite amusing when you first see it, it won't stand up to much detailed scrutiny. So that was the the independent's view of our idea, which is a bit of a shame really, because I used to buy The Independent when I lived in London. So I was a bit niffed about that, but never mind. So bit of a mixed reaction. And to be fair, I mean, we were only two guys with this with this idea. It was very much a sort of David and Goliath sort of sort of position. But we thought that fundamental business purpose and business idea would work. So we we stuck at it and I could tell a lot of anecdotes about about that sort of period. It was an amazing opportunity really, creating a company from from scratch like that and then taking this idea out into the city, into into government and so on, and trying to sell it. I mean, just to give you a little bit of context, one, again, the sticks in my mind, we we got this new company, Glasscomrie, so we better have a bank account. So I got the forms to fill in from our local branch and it was kind of, what's the name of the company? How many employees? Two. Do you own your own premises? No. What's your address? The Cowshed. What's your assets? Two, two mobile phones and two laptops. Estimated first year turnover, 750 million pounds. So it was kind of, you know, it was either going to be massively successful or a total footnote in history. So I guess if it's taught me anything really, it is that if you've got a really strong sense of purpose and a strong business model, actually a small team is not a disadvantage. And actually, it's not necessarily disadvantage if nobody expects you to succeed. So we just got on with our thing and took this idea, gained momentum with it and ultimately took it to the the capital markets where it was very successful. We raised the 1.9 billion pounds from nothing to to finance the acquisition, which took place in May 2001. And Gary, if you'd like to flip over to the next slide. So The Independent was was very kind at the time, without referring back to their previous editorial, referred to it as Welsh Wizardry. And again, I do remember it said something along the lines of, yes, this is so obviously the right way to own and finance a water company that the only surprise is that no one's done it before. So there we were. We we'd won over The Independent and we'd and we'd successfully taken over Welsh Water back in May 2001, which I guess surprised a lot of people, including locally. So just to give you a little bit of a flavour of of what that felt like. At the time, fingers crossed here now, hopefully Gary can play us a short film. This is from BBC News at the time that the the deal was announced.
Though we've seldom been short of water here in Wales, our water bills are among the very highest in Britain. Now the new owners of Welsh Water are pledging to bring them down.
Sounds good, but can they do it? Glasscomrie have struck a unique deal that'll see control of Welsh Water return to Wales. It's not a commercial venture in the usual sense. Glasscomrie will have no shareholders. Instead, profits will be passed on to consumers in the form of lower bills. The 1.8 billion pounds it'll cost to buy Welsh Water from present owners, the American corporation Western Power, will be raised from an issue of bonds in the city.
We will be able to reduce the financing costs of the company. One third of the income of Dualcomrie actually goes to those towards those financing costs. And if we could reduce those costs by only 1%, that's worth about 15 pounds to every household in Wales.
No other water company has been run this way before and the deal will require the approval of both the industry regulator and the National Assembly. Glasscomrie's directors have been there today presenting their plans.
They hope to be able to bring bills down in spite of the very large environmental programme of works. Now, that's the kind of guarantees on price cuts and job guarantees that we've been looking for from them this morning.
Welsh Water was part of the doomed Hadir empire that disappeared under a mountain of debt. Glasscomrie say their made in Wales solution will deliver a better future for customers and the environment.
So yeah, in the in the in the photo there, as well as a, you know, shockingly youthful picture of myself, you've got Rodri Morgan, the first first minister of Wales, the newly created Welsh Welsh Assembly and Welsh Government, being one of the key stakeholders that we needed to get on board. And very much the reason why they backed this idea was because they saw it as a as a as a solution, as a as an idea that very much resonated with Wales. So this was how people in Wales would want their their water company to be to be run on their behalf. So a lot of a lot of support and, you know, a lot of people pleased to see it ultimately succeed. But it was very controversial in the run up to the takeover. And if we flip onto the next slide, Gary, the, just an example, this is an article from The Guardian a couple of months earlier, referring to government departments in in London being very, very nervous about the whole idea. Department of Trade and Industry, as was saying, being said to be wedded to the idea that equity owned company was the only way to run a privatised monopoly industry such as water. And the the key concerns they had really were, and these, you know, I think are very interesting, across the whole wider sort of purpose debate and ownership debate, was that only shareholders would be able to push the business to to drive efficiencies, take difficult commercial decisions and so on. That wouldn't happen if you didn't have shareholders there and in the background providing that impetus. And also that a mutual type company, which is how we were seen, traditionally not seen as being very efficient at raising capital, that once capital markets perhaps were less positive, we wouldn't be able to raise the money we needed for that very asset intensive business. And therefore it would fall back to government to to provide the finance that the company needed, which clearly the Treasury did did not want to happen. So this was seen as a very dangerous sort of precedent that that a non shareholder company would end up owning a piece of of essential kind of infrastructure in the in the UK. So if we look at the the next, the next slide, that background explains a lot about the sort of corporate model that we set up. Because to address those concerns, you know, we needed to be able to persuade people that this was going to be a commercial and efficient enterprise. So it is, it is, it's a company under the same company's act as all the the shareholder owned companies, but it's a company limited by guarantees. So it's just a different form of private company. But we saw the the independent directors on the board of the companies being absolutely crucial. There would always be a majority of of non executive directors. They would be people with big corporate experience and reputations and that they would drive the executive to to manage the business efficiently. And also that they would ensure that it was run safely so that bondholders, pension funds, banks, et cetera, could could safely invest in this organisation. And as a consequence, also it needed to be able to persuade those those investors that they could invest, say, 50 years in one of our bonds and that the company would would understand the importance of that capital and would be organised in such a way to ensure that it remained low risk, it remained commercial, it remained financially viable. So we needed to be profitable and commercial. But we thought we would create an alignment of interests so that the benefit of those profits would obviously be good for the business. It would be good for our bondholders, because the more profitable we were, the stronger finances, the secure their investment is. But then ultimately, those profits don't go off to shareholders. They get reinvested or returned to customers. So that would align the interests of customers, bondholders and the business behind that single, single purpose. And one, just as an aside, one of the interesting other angles is around the role of the members of the company, the people who provide that theoretical guarantee, coming from local community, local stakeholders and so on. In some ways, a bit of a throwback to pre World War Two shareholder ownership, which often the majority of shareholders in a company were for the same, from the same town or the same city as as the business itself, giving us that sort of local sense of of stakeholder responsibility. So 20 years on, what do we think about the model now? Well, if we look at the next slide, please, Gary. One of the last things that I did before I handed the baton on to the new, the new generation was to, with the board, to look at our original sort of sense of purpose. And in the light of the 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 modern debate that's going on around the role of purpose within business, we wanted to align ourselves very visibly with that. So we kind of refreshed our purpose statement to be explicit that it is about providing drinking water environmental services in a way that enhances the wellbeing of the people we're there to serve, the customers and communities we're there to serve. And crucially, that's not just today, that is for future generations as well. And that aligns very much with a piece of of legislation in Wales called the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act. And that's something that that our purpose, we think, is is very much in alignment with. So we felt that sense of purpose and our mission and our vision to earn the trust of our customers every day remains as as valid now as it did 20 years before. And just finally then, well, if we look at the last slide 12 there, Gary. What, what do we, you know, what would I say about the success or otherwise of that business model 20 years on? Well, I think in many, in many ways, you know, nothing is perfect. We still have, you know, plenty of 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 areas to work at, areas of weakness. But the fundamental business model, we think, has worked pretty well in that we've striven to provide a good service, more affordable to our customers. That enhances our reputation with regulators, with rating agencies and so on. That improves the credit quality. That means we can raise money more cheaply. That means we can carry on all that huge investment programme into that very asset intensive company, but at a lower cost. So we can actually improve service, keep bills down and and improve the reputation of the company in a sort of a virtuous circle. That's that's how we saw it. And, you know, a bit of blowing our own trumpet here now, as I say, very far from perfect. But, you know, the financial model has succeeded in in raising money more cheaply than any other utility company in the UK. And we do have the best credit rating of any UK utility company, which is not bad considering we started off as a sort of shell company that was worth a pound. And the fact that we've, we've got the best record on keeping down the increases in bills helps us to have pretty consistently very high, often the highest levels of customer satisfaction and customer trust in the sector. So we thought, you know, it'd be good for customers, it'll be good for financial markets, it'll be an attractive investment and help us focus on the long term. And again, we're not unique in this. Many of the water companies thinking out long term. But certainly that's something that we've helped lead the way on, for example, through something called Welsh Water 2050, which is taking a generational view of the sorts of challenges that we're going to face through climate change, new technology and so on, and trying to invest, you know, with those long term challenges for for our customers in in mind. Well, I guess probably the final thing I would say though is perhaps, you know, we didn't really quite understand what the kind of human capital benefits of this would be. So actually, 20 years on, the fact that we're an environmental company, one that's that's non shareholder, it's here for the benefit of customers, it's here with a strong social purpose, do increasingly see that's a, that's a big advantage as well in terms of being able to attract people to come and work for a sort of medium sized business like ours. And, you know, leads to very high levels of of engagement amongst colleagues who who really do so often go the extra mile because they know that they're providing that essential service and that their efforts go to benefit customers rather than than anybody else. So for us, the ultimate bottom line is how much value have we been able to generate for customers over those 20 years? Well, in part, we've generated a business which has a sort of a quasi equity value now of about two and a half billion. But also, we've been able to return just over 450 million pounds of value to customers in that period through lower bills, particularly through help from the company to reduce bills for those who are really struggling to pay and also through extra investment, addressing some of those long term challenges. So always plenty more to do. It's a fascinating industry, one with big challenges out there for for the next generation and so on. But we think the model, to be fair, it's come through, you know, the financial crash, it's come, come through coronavirus, et cetera, so far, has been tested over those 20 years and and the the achievements, yeah, you know, we're, we're proud and pleased with progress so far. So that's by way of an introduction from me. Thanks very much, Gary, for for driving the slides through there. And Colin, very happy to to discuss, discuss and answer questions as as you would like.
Okay, well, Chris, thank you so much for a really fascinating presentation. And I think it brings out very well the way in which purpose can drive success in businesses. I'm going to ask you a few questions and we'll have a brief conversation for 10 or 15 minutes. And then we'll throw it out into questions from other people viewing this. So please do feel free to send in your questions on the Q and A. But could I just start off by asking you, do you think that this is a model that can be generally used in the water industry? And would you go further in terms of saying that this is a model that could be used more generally in relation to utilities as a whole?
Well, yeah, it's, it is a question that's been asked in in the past over that 20 year period, Colin. I guess first thing I would say is we never, we never set out to be evangelists for this model. You know, some proselytised, every company should be this way. And and in some ways, of course, that suited us quite well because actually being different to the other companies is quite motivating for for us and our colleagues. It makes us unique in terms of an investment proposition and and so on. But now that, now that I'm no longer in the hot seat, as it were, I could sort of sit back a little bit more from this and and think about, well, you know, could it have have wider uses? I think probably the first two things I'd say is there's a good reason why it hasn't happened with any other water company. And that is simply actually because of changes in in fashion and and understanding of value in markets. When we bought Welsh Water in 2000, 2001, you know, timing is everything in business. Water sector, big asset intensive businesses like that were seen as very old economy. No one was interested. It was all about dot com boom and so on. So but it was the only time in history when you've been able to buy UK utility assets at less than a pound per pound of regulatory asset value. So we bought Welsh Water at a discount. And of course, as a company with no shareholders, that was essential for us because that gave us that sort of initial quasi equity company value. We bought a business that asset value is 1.9 billion for 1.7 billion. So instantly, we got a bit of a financial cushion there. Today, that same metric wouldn't work. You'd be spending, I don't know, over 2 billion pounds to buy 1.9 billion pounds of assets. Difficult to get that off the ground. So that's why it hasn't been replicated. But, you know, I think, I think the second half of your question, I, I really think he's very interesting because there are a number of sectors which, you know, are essential public services long term, but difficult to get off the ground. And I think renewable energy is a is a great case in point here. You've got a lot of discussion around how to finance nuclear power at the moment in the UK and elsewhere. And of course, the big risk, you know, building a nuclear power station and so on is hugely risky thing to do. So therefore getting equity capital in to take that risk is is very, very expensive. Many of these utility businesses, infrastructure businesses, when they're up and built and running, of course, they throw off cash, very low risk and and therefore they become hugely hugely valuable. So getting financing essential, big essential public infrastructure like that is very difficult in a democratic society because you have to put lots of money on the table to get equity to come in and take the risk. And it either flops horribly and you never hear from them again, or it works well. And then suddenly they're earning big, big, big profits because they took the risk. And then that is very difficult for people to get their heads around. So I just wonder whether, if you were looking at building something like a big tidal barrage or something like that, which is going to need a big asset value upfront. Actually, if if you if you could borrow against that asset value through a regulatory asset value model, which is effectively, that was our insight. This company is worth what the regulator says it's worth. Therefore, you can lend us money against it. If you could raise money in the bond markets like that, it would be much cheaper. You wouldn't need that big expensive lump of equity. And then hopefully it's successful and it throws off value and that value can then be reinvested back into communities, environmental benefit or, you know, whatever social purpose that the thing's created for. So yeah, I I just think it's interesting that there may be a time when we're looking at big investments for big social purposes, whether this sort of model actually might have something to offer.
Right. And is the model reasonably accurately described as essentially being a mutual that is owned by its customers?
Well, it it shares a lot of similarities with with a mutual business. But actually, we did go through the thought process as to whether to be a mutual. So actually that the customers would own the business. And in the end, we consciously decided not to do that. And the reason we we did that was because we thought it would be more reassuring for investors, you know, the people are going to own the bonds here, to know that this is a commercial business run for the benefit of the business, its its finances and its customers, all with that alignment of interest that I referred to. But, you know, for example, a lot of mutual businesses in the 10 years before we we did our But, you know, for example, a lot of mutual businesses in the ten years before we we did our takeover. Had been, you know, the customers who owned the business had been seduced by the offer of a of a short term lump of cash to sell out their ownership, demutualize. And then it, you know, and and it becomes a a shareholder owned bank or or taken private or. And of course, that that then introduces that takeover risk back into the equation. So so we thought. Run on behalf of customers but not actually owned by customers. Just because it is such an asset intensive business and therefore, you know, it was one point nine billion of initial funding, we've now raised over three and a half billion pounds of of funding. Up to fifty year length. Yeah, you 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 need to know that this is not going to be demutualized or, you know. Taken off in a different direction or or whatever. So that that's why, for good or ill, we went for a company limited by guarantee.
Okay. And in terms of the. Problems that you were describing that people frequently associate with this type of structure, namely that it's not efficient. How how were you able to overcome that efficiency problem?
Well, yes, I mean, that was probably the. The biggest kind of stereotype that we had to over overcome. And again, partly it's because the reputation of mutual businesses in the UK was. A bit, you know, self satisfying and and very low key and building societies and, you know. Not big aggressive commercial sort of sort of enterprises. So what we did. Was to try and bring as many elements of incentivization and so on into the framework as we could in that very sort of commercial model. So. You know, picking two or three out. Well, you know, one of the things we did was we sought to harness the power of markets to drive efficiency in the business by outsourcing. A lot of our activities through competitive tendering. That had the advantage of well as well, that by letting those fixed price contracts, we could fix in our cash flows for the first five years or so, the most risky period. And that was very reassuring as well for rating agencies and and investors and so on. But the idea was that competitively retendering those contracts, that would provide a market pressure to drive down costs and and indeed it did. About the first five to ten years or so. After that, we have actually, we've actually re en sourced quite a lot of activities and so on and and been driving efficiencies through other other means, but. That was one thing we we very much looked to. Executive remuneration was another one that was much talked about, I mean, perversely, the idea that unless. The executives are are being motivated by financial gain, you know, linked to share options and so on, that they won't. You know, they won't take the difficult decisions, they'll 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 opt for an easier lifestyle. So. Again, it was important that there were bonus payments and so on available to the executives, but also right through the business, every single person who works in Welsh Water. But the key difference being, yes, there's a commercial remuneration structure there. But it was it's rewarding things that are of value to customers directly. So the metrics that you have to hit to to earn bonuses and so on are things like. High service quality, high customer satisfaction, generating value for customers so the bills can be reduced and and so on in the in the future. So. It comes back to that alignment of interests, yes, trying to create those same. Financial and commercial incentives to drive the business to take the difficult decisions, but aligning. The those incentives with what's of direct value to customers.
Okay, so that's fascinating and that's absolutely core to what we're talking about in this forum. So as I understand what you're saying, you're saying that the people in the business were measured against essentially customers. Societal, environmental. Measures and that their award structure, their. Remuneration, promotion, et cetera, were related to those. And not simply or not predominantly to financial performance. Is that is that an accurate summary?
That's that's exactly right. And that that balance has sort of changed a bit over time, probably just the first five, ten years or so. Gen, you know, reducing costs, generating value in the balance sheet, those were part of the incentive structure. In fact, I think in the first five years at least, actually bonuses could be lost if the credit ratings of the company went down, for example. So that was very much focusing on. Giving bondholders comfort that that it would be run, you know, with their low risk investment in mind. But of course, the ultimate beneficiaries of that are customers. So as the balance sheets got stronger, more and more of the emphasis has switched over onto metrics of either service performance. Environmental quality, drinking water quality or customer satisfaction measures, you know, the customer service we provide, level of customer trust, et cetera. Come back to that vision statement, earning the trust of the customers, something that we talked about within the business, we, you know, we think of that as being our our bottom line. We want to be the most trusted water company in the UK and generally, actually, it is either ourselves or Scottish Water who have that who have that that accolade.
And that has significantly improved your performance in those areas relative to that of other companies.
It has. It no, it it definitely has. But, you know, you've got to, you've got to admit, you know, you've got to accept here, you're talking to a person who's been responsible for this for twenty years, so I'm I'm completely self deluded by by this stage, but, you know. In many areas where we were laggards in performance, we have become leading in performance. Not all areas, whether that in some cases is due to the the geography of the of the area we serve and so on, you can debate. And we certainly do debate with the industry regulator of what. So far from being perfect, but on measures like. Increase in bills, numbers of customers being supported to pay their bill, level of customer trust. Interestingly, customer satisfaction from both businesses as well as households on all those things Welsh Water is doing. Generally up there with the best or or being the best and and that is about, that's what we focus on, you know. In our in our company, the the most watched statistic is the quarterly. Of what survey of customer satisfaction and and customer trust levels. It's called CEMEX and we came top last year. And that was, as I say, hugely followed within the company in the way that. Thinking back twenty years ago, the share price of of the Welsh Water Group would have been the thing that was, you know, being being told to colleagues every week.
Yeah, okay, well, that's that's very interesting. And can you say whether you feel? That this has enhanced your trust with the regulator of what as well? Because I think that some companies find it quite difficult to convince the regulator, the regulator. That they really are focused on the long term interest of customers. Do you think that your model, your measures, et cetera? Have made it easier for you to negotiate price arrangements with off.
See, I think that is that is a very difficult one to answer. Certainly, you know, go back into history. It was a big call for for off what at the time, a lot of pressure, as you've as you've seen from some of those quotes from government departments and so on, saying, hmm, actually, we'd really rather you blocked this. We don't, we don't like this idea. So it was, it was a brave step by off what at that stage to go ahead and say, well, no, we can't see any reason, given our legal duties, why this shouldn't happen and actually. Mixed economy, one of these things maybe will, you know, act as a bit of a spur for the others. So actually, we're going to give, we're going to allow them to go ahead. But I think there's a consequence, you know, of what we're very keen to to stress, that there's going to be no easy life for Welsh Water, the fact that we. We sit here saying, well, what we do is for the benefit of customers, they're going to regulate us just as hard. As as all the other companies. And to be fair, that's exactly what we wanted and expected from them. We didn't expect any different treatment. I think wind the clock on to today and and you're absolutely right, Colin, because. You know, I mean, our 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 objectives and off what's objectives are very much aligned, you know, it is about driving the best value for customers. But we don't always see eye to eye on how to do that, perhaps how well we're doing or or maybe on timescales as well and and, you know, I've I've worked in utility companies around the globe. It is a feature of utility people that we like to say, well, we're thinking about the longer term, therefore we want to invest in longer term projects and so on and. In my days as a skeptical consultant, you know, in my early career, you know, I would, I would, you know, challenge, challenge that pretty hard, which is what off what do. And rightly so. What will be interesting, I think, is as companies like ourselves and some of the other English companies are. Very much trying to to sort of promote the the purpose agenda and think longer term and actually align their their business and their shareholder interest with with what's good for their customers as well. Whether whether that will impact on the behavior of off what and whether off what will will start differentiate more perhaps between. To put it bluntly, those customers, those companies they trust more and those they they trust less. And certainly, I think a lot of positive things being said about off what about wanting to to move into a into. An approach to these longer term and focused on the outcomes. Much more for society than just sort of set piece, five year regulatory zero sum game reviews. So I think that is the direction of travel and. You know, I think it would be fascinating to see whether those companies that are that are leaning more in that progressive sort of direction. Can can deliver a a different, more cooperative, albeit still arms length and, you know, they're still the regulator and they need to hold our feet to the fire. That's what they're there for.
Right. And are there areas where you think? That things haven't gone as well as you. They might and areas where you think that there are significant improvements that could be made?
Yeah, I mean, there's always, in a complex business like this, there's always things that could have got better. Most of those I put down to the incompetence of of the executive for making the wrong calls and so on along the way. So we've definitely made mistakes, you know. Along the way. I mean, interestingly, as I've alluded to, our outsourcing strategy went pretty much full full circle, we outsourced a lot, used competitive pressures. But then found that actually that was driving more short term behaviors by our contractors. Sort of some of the cuts they were making were were reducing costs in the short term, which, to be fair, that's what we asked them to do, get prices, you know, get costs down the next five years. Help us hit our regulatory targets and so on, but actually was actually hollowing out the business for the longer term. So actually, in that respect, we changed tack about twenty ten and started bringing things back in where we were sure we could provide it. More cheaply than the outsourced option and and could invest more for the longer term, particularly in our people as well as, you know, some some of the asset decisions. So certainly been some evolution there. But, you know, overall, as I've said, you know, hopefully I'm not deluding myself here, we've gone through some big, some big financial challenges and I I think we have. Answered those kind of existential questions that were raised at the start by by the skeptics, you know, would you be, you know, will Welsh Water be able to raise money in a financial downturn? Or will it have to come and and seek government support? And and we've answered that very much, you know, in the positive.
Great, thank you. So I'll I'll now turn to some of the questions. That have come in and then a couple of people have raised questions about the applicability. Of this approach to other types of markets around the world in terms of emerging markets, developed countries, et cetera. And. One in particular says that if one's thinking about embarking on this type of endeavor. To structure a water company in a developing country that has a large population of impoverished people that desperately need access to water. Not only for their home, but to develop their economy and build agriculture. Is is this an approach that you think would be applicable in that type of rather different environment?
You know, I think I I would be sort of, you know, I would, I would cautiously recommend people to to think about, you know, that and 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 the applicability and so on. And what. What I have learned over the years, because we've had delegations from many governments, sort of. National, regional regulator offices or turn up and and kind of think, ah, is this the single, the silver bullet we've been looking for? Now, this this seems, this seems great, it's private capital because we haven't got any public capital for this infrastructure. So that's great, bringing in private capital. But it's doing so in a in a way that we feel more comfortable with. It's not profit maximizing, what, you know, whatever, it's not going to be money going out of the country. So there's been a lot of interest in that. But, you know, we do tend to to stress to people, particularly governments in those circumstances, but, you know, but you remember, you have to give up control here. You know, this this can't just be a way of saying, well, we want private capital to come and do these good things for us, but we want to keep fiddling, you know. Organizing, running this business in, you know, from the from from the backseat here. Actually, Welsh Water is a genuinely private company, it's arms length, it. You know, it's it's down to us to provide the high credit quality that enables us to get that private capital in. So I think I think there is. Definitely, there's quite a lot in the UK experience around setting up. That regulatory asset value approach so that you can bring private capital in, that it can be given a. Fair return on that regulatory asset value. That's a way of getting private in investment into. Essential utility companies, essential utility infrastructure. And often that's quite controversial, particularly for things like water and sanitation, which are often very municipal, locally owned services. So the idea therefore of something like a glass comeery that that is answerable to local stakeholders, that. You know, if it's well run, will generate upside and then the value of that will be invested back into customers and communities. And so you can see why that is a very attractive idea, but as I say. It's not a single bullet and it certainly isn't a kind of like an easy, it's not an easy option. You still got to, you still got to address all those same questions around. Making it attractive for. Footloose capital to come to your market and invest in your infrastructure and then how to. Get good people who know what they're doing and incentivize them to to drive performance and take those difficult decisions. And certainly. If you if you then say, but also we're going to intervene every once in a while and 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 kind of ask you to take on extra labor or whatever it might be, because we've got a recession going on or whatever. That for me would, you know, would undermine the sort of the 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 structure. So. What we did, that's why I tend to talk through the history, it was, it was a product of its time and its location. We have the big advantage in the UK of a settled regulatory system that gives a lot of. Security there, but, you know, it does seem to me that logically there are aspects of this that could help countries. In a wide variety of circumstances to to solve that conundrum of how do you get private capital into essential public infrastructure? Without having to sort of go go down the 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 kind of full shareholder owned sort of approach.
Right, right. There's a another question that's come in about the response of the business to crises. And you mentioned in your presentation that you thought that Welsh Water had. Done well during the financial crisis and now during the coronavirus. Can can you actually just say a little bit more about your current experience during the coronavirus? How 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 do you feel that the the business has been doing over the last few months?
Well, I think I think very well, but, you know, equally, I think most of the, you know, a large number of the UK water companies have responded very well to the to the crisis. But I guess what has sort of helped us in a way is the fact that we do have. Very strong balance sheets, we've got the best credit rating, as I've said, we just actually. We thought about pulling it and then we thought, no, we'll go ahead. So just before sort of coronavirus started impacting on the markets, we went out and did the. What we were told anyway was the cheapest ever ten year bond issued in the UK. So, you know, taking advantage of those very low. Interest rates and so on. So that secure financial structure enabled us as a business to say, well, we've got to take all the. The sensible precautions, we've got to prioritize keeping the essential. Service running in the potential half your workforce, perhaps, you know, half your colleagues being away ill or or whatever. So. You have to focus in on that disaster management preparation. So it's something that that the whole industry does extremely well, because we're hit by disasters all the time, often meteorological ones or. Whatever it might be, but so that's all very well handled. But as a business, we we were never kind of right, but that means therefore we've got to. Stop worrying about the longer term, we're going to close down the investment program or anything like that. We're able to sort of say, okay, we've got to do this safely, but actually, how do we carry on? Investing for the long term. You know, we we can't afford to lose six, twelve, eighteen, twenty four months on those on those investment programs because we we need those to be dealing with, preparing. For other things like climate change and so on, that are also big challenges that we that we face. And. I guess, again, you know, utility people, they turn out in in terrible weather because what they do is really important and they they heroics to to keep service going. You know, across the board. Maybe in our case, the fact that that we are a purpose company, that we are there for our customers, there is that real sense of, you know, perhaps even more so sense of pride. In Welsh Water people of what we do for our community and that we're a part of our community, certainly the, you know, the the efforts, the flexibility, the ingenuity of 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 the team. You know, quite 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 exceptional.
And do you think if in. And do you think if in one of these crises, interest rates started going up significantly, would that change the nature of the arithmetic and potentially make the company vulnerable or not? In other words, is it a low interest rate model?
Yeah, no, very fair challenge. I think, you know, well, actually, it's part of the job of management and the board to make sure that you have foreseen such risks and positioned yourself accordingly. So, you know, one of the inescapable facts of us as a business is that we are not owned by anybody else. So in the event of getting into some sort of, you know, it might be high interest rates, it could be deflation or whatever it might be, some sort of, we haven't got anybody to go to and say, please sub us a few hundred million pounds to see us through. So as a consequence, we do run our finances in a cautious and well risk mitigated fashion. So exactly for that reason, Colin, we've always had a large proportion of our capital investment pre-funded, we've always had a large proportion funded at fixed interest rate, or given the unique nature of the regulatory asset value model, an index linked funding arrangement, but so that, yes, you could have a big spike in interest rates or whatever, but actually our financial outflows very much hedged against that. Exactly, exactly for that, for that reason. So we have been through, we've created our balance sheet to be pretty well insulated against periods of deflation or whatever risks would be out there. But yes, it probably affects our sort of culture in a way, we are financially more conservative because we don't have equity backers. But again, we're making a virtue of that, because that makes us therefore more attractive to people who want a low risk investment. So they will charge us a lower rate of interest as a consequence, so the benefits of that financial conservatism, again, flow back through lower costs to lower bills for customers.
Right, right. Now, a number of the questions are particularly interested in these issues you raised around measurement and incentives and remuneration. And in particular, the question of whether you really have succeeded in shifting the nature of the measurement system within the organisation and the remuneration base. So I suppose two questions that arise is, does it raise questions about recruitment when you, you know, you tell people you're not actually going to be rewarded on financial measures predominantly? And does it change the recruitment for the better or worse? And secondly, what about the bondholders? I mean, are they really bought into this notion that they're better off if you measure your performance in these alternative ways?
Okay, well, you know, the first challenge absolutely was one that people thought would be a big problem. You know, if you're going to run a commercial organisation with a big capital value like this, you know, you need to be able to attract people who are comfortable in running that sort of organisation and credible to investors and so on. To date, we haven't had a problem with that. We have been able to get good people to join our business. And, you know, whilst we, as an executive team, were very well paid by any sensible benchmark, we certainly paid quite a lot less and structured very differently to the shareholder owned companies. Maybe because we're unique out there, you know, we attract a certain type of person to come and work for us, you know? If you really wanted to be incentivised around share options or, you know, successful derivatives contracts, you probably wouldn't come to work for Welsh Water, you know? You probably wouldn't be very happy if you did. So there's definitely a bit of self-selection that sort of goes on there. Have we really been able to crack the problems with metrics and so on? Well, again, you've got to be realistic here, nothing is perfect. I seem to remember way back in my past, being told about Goodhart's Law, you know, the idea that any metric, I think he was talking about the measures of the money supply, but I think it would work equally well to measures of executive remuneration. As soon as something has a big pounds sign attached to it, then it affects people's behaviours towards it and how they measure it and all those sorts of things. So you have to be very mindful that no system of metrics is perfect. But we have followed some pretty straightforward principles. We've wanted to use published measures that are sort of used by the regulator, widely reported by similar companies, et cetera, so you can sort of see how our performance over time is mapping against others, things that are, you know, through engagement with customers and research, we know are very important to them. You know, and we are very transparent and open in our reporting, so people can see those measures we've done well on, those that we haven't. And then, of course, it's the role of that board, their reputations to make it clear that, no, these are going to have to be stretching and, you know, you can be rewarded for good performance for customers, not for mediocre performance. So there's a lot of art in there in how to use metrics. It's not perfect, but certainly, as I say, you know, just from my experience, talking to colleagues in Welsh Water, whatever part of the business they're in and so on, they know what our customer satisfaction score was last time around. Very often, actually, you know, we're constantly testing customer satisfaction, feedback on our service, they know what it is for their team, for their part of the business and so on, they know if another part of the business isn't doing so well at the moment. So it is a truism that what gets measured, you know, gets focused on and what gets focused on by the board, reported on by the board, absolutely is important to the company. So how much of it is financial incentivisation and how much of it is lining up those metrics with that purpose that our people find intrinsically valuable? I can't really answer that, but in a perverse way, we had to put some money behind this, otherwise people would not have taken this, you know, given this credibility in the first place, bizarre though that may seem.
Chris, we can clearly go on a lot longer discussing this fascinating case, but unfortunately we've run out of time. And I'd just really like to thank you for having presented such really significant insights into the way in which Welsh Water has set up its business and so successfully run it. So thank you very much indeed for having spoken to us this afternoon, and many congratulations on such a successful period running the company and essentially creating the company. So very well done to you, and thank you very much indeed for having participated.
Well, Colin, thank you very much for the invitation and a huge supporter of the whole economics neutrality project and so on. So I'm very delighted to be involved with it. And nice of you to say so, but the real benefit of the model will be demonstrated now that the old brush would likely is out of the way, it will go on from strength to strength. So that will really prove the value of the model.
Okay, well, thank you very much indeed. And that ends the proceedings for today. Very much look forward to all of you joining us for tomorrow's session. Thank you very much.